Okay, so we'll call the study session into, what do you call it?
Order.
Or to order.
My password doesn't work.
Okay. I'm really, oh, yes, we need to do that first.
Okay, let's stand for the flag, sweetie. Pledge of lead.
To the flag, in the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, well, Mr. President, I'm really excited tonight because we have Lisa Roberts here to explain to us the very difficult new ESAA accountability framework that has just, we stayed, just recently received approval from this US Department of Ed for this plan for evaluating school effectiveness. So, Ms. Roberts, we're all yours.
Okay, so there's really going to be two things that I'm going to try to explain here. And first of all, it's going to be the accountability measures that all schools are going to be held accountable for. And then the second part of it is going to be this, the current state support that they're going to provide for schools. The business explained to me at ESD, and they said, everything is very fluid at this point. So that means some things may change as things. So we're going to go with what the plan is, and then we'll keep you posted as to what changes are going to be. So, one of the things that's different under the every school, every student's success versus no child left behind, is that it's looking at all schools compared to all schools, not high schools, elementary, or elementary. And the whole idea is a very much more of a focus on equity. And so I'll go into it a little bit later about what they mean, but equity for all kids, no matter what subgroup they belong to. So, one of the things is that the states were asked to come up with a plan that minimally could identify the five lowest performing schools in order to shift from not to say, well, what are we going to do to fire your administration, get rid of your teachers, and make it punitive? But what can we do to really support those buildings who need our support? So it's a shift from punitive to support. And so I'm hoping we embrace that as the true intention of this. Again, the obligation that we have to promote equitable access for every student in our state. It also is a plan that helps identify students who are not reaching it and addressing those opportunity gaps. So I don't know if you remember, but before it was like, what was identified for federal purposes is the lowest performing schools, and then the next lowest performing schools. And that's no longer what they're going to be doing. There's going to be two, and I'll show it to you in depth in just a second, but there's going to be two different categories. One is going to be identifying schools that need comprehensive support. In other words, they're struggling in multiple areas. And then the second group is not going to be that next most struggling group. It's going to be, okay, let's look at all of your populations within your school, and are there some target populations in which we really need to target our support to those particular groups of students? So that's a shift from what we did before. Okay, so, again, starting with the why, the Every Student Succeeds Act is looking at pursuing equity by closing gaps, continuous improvements for all schools, and that's two that we're really going to be looking at here. They also had to have a part of their plan as how we're going to retain and redeem effective contributors. That's how we're going to be really reflecting on early in that day. And then we can go trying to move towards more flexibility of use of these sources rather than having so many rules around all of those resources. Trying to move to an improvement mindset, that everyone is in the business of continuous improvement. That schools are really going to have change. They're being identified for support to improve student learning, not to be identified as failing. So that's a message that they're going to keep on trying to get out there. And that different needs require different types of support, and every student has a change at a time. So there's going to be longer, instead of identifying schools every year, there's going to be change back even a little more time. So the reason we're bringing this up to you now is that in December, all of the different measures will go into the state status system. And then we were saying that we could, all the things that we actually have been implementing into, such as attendance, that we double check that are numbered correct. So that's. They did not identify who this is, or who it would be. That is supposed to be in early March, so the statistics really need to be found where they're going to be identified by schools. And then, I'll explain that SQSS has been supported in just a second, but they're not going to just have support tomorrow. So, the idea is going to be what you're going to find out in the mid-February, and these are always KPI dates. So when they submit it February, this is, they probably know that, but they set a date. It's not always a guideline.
It's fluid.
Fluid.
Okay. So, here we go. We used to be, this is the end, as they are determining our subgroups. This is something just to keep in mind, that it used to be the minimum number of students you needed to have in any particular group was 10. Because we're moving to a three-year cycle of combined data, we are going to have, oh, they're looking at mine, and they shouldn't tell me to switch the slide.
As long as you keep moving, I can keep.
Oh, so I can see the screen here, okay, got it. They're moving to an inside of, size of 20. So in some, you might see that when we're looking at the data later on, there are some students that are not reflecting their data because we simply don't have enough students in those pocket areas. Okay, so this is what it's going to look like. This is kind of the meat of the whole thing here. Is that it used to be, in No Child Left Behind, we were looking only at proficiency. How were students doing in ELA? How were they doing in math on the state assessments? Trying to get an idea of looking at students that there's multiple factors to what makes a student successful. It's going to be different at the different levels here. If you look at it, elementary in school is the same, and I'm going to show you the weighting in just a second here. But what they have, what they have added to it is that they're going to look at proficiency. They are going to look at growth, and growth is going to be looking at what is, if compared to everyone else, where if you're in the 30th percentile, they're going to look at all the people in the 30th percentile and say, did you make the expected growth that you were expected to have? So, and that can only be done K8 because you have to have a series, well, actually, think about it. It's only from third grade to eighth grade. Because you have to have an assessment every year in order to show that growth, and we don't give state assessments for third grade. And then at high school, it's only given at one point in time. So they'll show, so K8, they're going to have that as a growth measure. So even if proficiency, if you're showing growth, that's another factor that they're looking at. We're going to be looking at our English learner progress, and the data they're looking at there is the ALPA 21. And so the ALPA 21 tells us the level that a student is performing in in terms of their acquisition of language, and we're looking for progress. Are they moving up in terms of their acquisition of the English language? So that's what that measure is right there. And then the last thing they're going to look at is chronic absenteeism. And when they're figuring this particular factor, they have to miss a whole day or more. I'm in order for it to count as that, but chronic absenteeism. Okay, we move on to high school. In high school, they're still going to look at proficiency rates, and right now, that's ELA and math. They're going to look at the graduation rate, and that's the four-year graduation rate. They're looking at English learner progress, same thing that they looked at, because the ALPA 21 is done every single year for students who are qualified in this yellow. And then they're going to look at three different school quality or student success factors for the high school level. They're going to call that SQSS from now on in here. So if you see that, it's these other kind of non-academic factors. But one is chronic absenteeism, like before. Ninth graders on track, so they're looking at how many credits a ninth grader has received in their ninth grade year. Knowing that when we have ninth graders who are severely credit deficient in their ninth grade year, it impacts the rest of their high school career. And then advanced course taking, so dual credit classes. So this will include our running start kids, AP kids, some other way that they are getting college credit within the high school experience.
So what was the one measure that you mentioned, the 21?
The ALPA 21 is the test that's given to all ELL students.
ALPA?
It's ALPA, it's English Language Proficiency Assessment.
Okay.
But it's the name of the test. It's given yearly unless you have been exited from services. And what they do is that there's a one through, I believe, a six rating scale of where you are from emerging until you've been transitioned out of services. And so what they're looking at is for the kids, are they moving up levels? So are they progressing in their language?
So that would be the growth piece?
No, that would be English learner progress, because it's specifically only for our English language learners. Growth is going to be all students.
Okay.
And that's on the state assessments.
Okay, only?
On growth, that's all that they can measure really, is on the state assessments. Because they don't, they don't get any local data from us in terms of growth.
Okay.
So far, so good?
Yep.
Would you prefer questions at the end or hurry?
I'm going to have a place where I'm going to stop, and then I'm going to ask questions. But you know what, anytime you have a question, you can't really do.
Well, if you can remember your question, good for you.
That's why I wrote down.
Okay.
I taught middle school for a long time.
They have more, I guess, fancy idea.
This is the one that's a little complicated, and so I'm just going to tell you which ones to look at, because most of these do not apply to us. But because the schools in the state of Washington have many different configurations, our school, that K-12, you would think that's us, but it's not. That's those little tiny districts that K-12 is all like in one school, okay? So that you could have kindergarteners and 12th graders all in the same building. That's not us. So we are K8. So the second one down is going to be the weighting scale for our middle school and our two elementary schools. So 40% of it is going to be their proficiency, and that's going to be English Language Arts and Math currently. Science in the future, but it's our first year with a new science assessment this year. So it's not going to be concluded right now. 50% is going to be that growth, and that's going to be growth in both ELA and math. And then again, they're using smarter balanced proficiency rates to determine growth. Then they can't, none of our eighth graders are graduating, so the graduation's not part of their rating scale at all. And 5% of it's going to be the English language progress, so that's our ELL students. And then the other 5% is going to be that school quality, and for K8, that's absenteeism. That's the only measure there. Okay? Then we're going to move down to the typical high school, because that's what we are. So 30% of it's going to be proficiency. This was a big change for what we, how we used to measure the schools, because it used to be 100% proficiency. So it's going to be 30% proficiency. Can't do the growth part because you have to have a test every single year to show growth, and they don't have that at high school. So 50% is going to be the graduation. And then 5% is going to be that English language progress. The other 15%, if you remember, there were three different factors, and they're each 5%. It's the ninth grade on track, the absenteeism, and the dual credit. Those are, they're all 5%. Okay? And then I think it's right after this that I'm going to stop and let you ask some questions. Different from how they did it in the past, ESSA is going to, when they identify schools that are in need of support, it's going to be for a three-year cycle. So they have, they're going to look at the last three years of data. This year right here is the one where they are identifying the schools to receive support for the next three years. And you can see down below, then on that last year, they'll be looking at, they'll be looking at the next three years, and then possibly changing who needs the support from then on. The idea behind this is to give more sustained support over a longer period of time rather than identifying schools one year, then the next, then the next. All right, I'm not going to go into this because this is where it gets a little complicated. So, so far, what questions do you have? And I'm going to show you how they do this.
I want him to ask his, because I get afraid when they do that much energy next to me that's unexpressed.
Stop.
I don't know about that. So, how legitimately can they connect absenteeism to accountability? What I don't understand is there's factors beyond the school district's control. How can they honestly make a connection that schools are not accountable if there's absenteeism? I'm having a tough time making that connection.
Okay, and I'm just, this is an opinion on my part here. It's only 5% of the whole, 100% of how they're determining accountability. There is a high correlation between students being present and their success. So as a district, we do have some influence on how we can encourage students to be more, to be at school. I mean, we can't control everything.
Right.
But it's, we've always been in some sense that we need to have.
And this is a measure of school, not of individual students. This is how are we doing overall on each of those areas? No student is going to get a report card with these items on it.
It doesn't drill them to the.
Right, but I'm also seeing a table of measurements that if, shoot, pie in the sky, you get 100% graduation rate. But you do have an exception, for whatever reason, whether it's your demographics, whatever, you have a high absentee rate. For whatever, for whatever, cultural demographics, 100% graduation rate, you're still looking at 85% maximum you can be considering. Because there's a 15%.
Let me, let me show you, because it doesn't work, the math doesn't exactly look that way.
Okay.
Yeah. So it's not, it's not a straight, that's just the weighting scale.
Okay. The other, the other question I have is, so, under the typical high school model, why would the graduation not encompass your proficiencies? If you're gradu, if you're graduating kids, isn't the assumption that they are meeting proficiency, math, science?
I would say that when you break this down for schools, it's interesting, and it's something that you have to look at. If you are measuring proficiency, it's questions you're having, having to ask. If students are graduating, not all students who graduate are necessarily proficient on all measures. And it's our job at schools to make sure that those two are more aligned. If we're saying that, that we're graduating them on, they should also be proficient. It's not a one-to-one correlation though. That's why we consistently have kids who have the credits that they need, but they haven't been able to pass all the assessments, which is basically what that says.
So 50% of the measure is attached to graduation rate?
To on-time four-year graduation.
Four-year graduation rate, that was my question. So, they graduate, they may not necessarily be proficient.
Which is something we need to own, which is the reason, I like having multiple measures in this, because you, it's an opinion.
Well, and I think.
You don't want to play the system.
Yeah, right now, for this year's graduates, they have to have demonstrated proficiency in some way as part of the graduation requirements still, whether it's on a test or on an alternate measure. There could be a time in the next couple of years, and, and I don't think, I think OSPI worked hard to present a plan that we could stick with and not keep changing. There have been pieces of legislation to delink graduation from the state assessments. So if that happened, we still have to do the state assessments for the feds, because that's a requirement of ESSA. So this would still be grading us under ESSA on our assessments, whether there's, they remain part of graduation or not. So it would still weight, weight our performance as how we're graded, would still have a significant weight to those tests, whether we don't keep them part of the graduation or we do.
I appreciate you pointing this out, because I keep on having to refocus. This is for federal accountability. All of this information is for federal accountability, not necessarily what we decide as a state is going to be for graduation.
Right.
That's completely, completely different at that point. And because there's all kinds of ideas floating around, different pathways to graduation other than the standardized tests. So that's in a lot of flux right now at the state level. This is, what we proposed to the federal government, and they approved. Now, I've got to tell you, the reason they said this is somewhat in flux is that they, they built a plan. They sent it to the federal government, they said, okay, good. Brought it back to the practitioners, and they're having people in districts say, whoa, how are you going to do that? And what's that going to look like? That's why it's in flux right now, is that some of those, the realities of how you make this work are being worked out.
Are unreal.
Nicely said.
These are hard things they're deciding. Denise, I'm going to get back to where we.
All right, I have one question.
You may ask it.
Yeah, thank you. Why are they doing this?
Why are they doing this?
Yeah.
I think for a couple of reasons, so that we don't have such high-stakes tests that everything is on one particular measure. The idea of going to multiple, multiple measures is despractice. The other thing that you're going to see as we go on, they really want to target it more to identify who is struggling in your building, rather than just doing some blanket stadium, statements. Can we really target, who do we need to support the most within your system so that we can close those achievement gaps? I think they're trying to get to the all.
So are they going to give us more money?
That's at the very end, and, and you know, it's really funny, because.
You really want our attention, you would put that beginning.
No, but do you know, if you've been to a lot of OSPI presentations, they, they have lots of task forces to figure all of this out. So we saw what all the different task forces were, but they, they have some ideas as to what those supports are going to look like. From the federal government, they've been given no money, no dollar amounts whatsoever. So we don't have that. Okay, ready? Put it all out. Okay. This is where it becomes fun. So, we have all of these measures, okay, I think there's one more. And what they found is, when you're, when you're trying to compare school to school, what happens, like in most things, the distribution isn't even. You have a lot of schools who are clumped in the middle. So in order to, it's really creating a rank order. They've taken all the schools in the state of Washington, and then they put them into what they call deciles. So it's 10%, 10%, 10%, 10%, 10%. So then what they will do is they're going to give a decile value, this is going to, how they're doing the math for all of this. They're giving a decile value to where that school landed, okay? So on this particular one, so they're doing a 1 to 10 scale for each one of the measures and for the total, a 1 to 10 score. So they can determine which schools are those who need the most amount of support. Okay, so here's an example. And this is not our school, but it'll give you just an example here. This is a K-12, where you have all, all of those factors in one building. So, they are going to look at it like, oops. Do you want me to go back? No, you have to go to the next one. All right. All right, so, if you look at it right here, these are all of the different measures that, when they can do everything for that K-12 school. So you have the first one, the first two, where the proficiency, state assessment, ELA and math. And this is a pretend school here. So they ended up in the fifth decile for ELA, the seventh decile for math. The next two are, oh, sorry, they have science, they have science on this one right here. They're not, they're going to tell you, they're not going to do that this year, science, because it's a brand-new test, okay? So the next two over, ELA and math, that's for the growth. And in this particular building, this, this school that they have here, they were in the third decile for ELA. That's comparing them to everybody else in the state of Washington, fifth decile for math. ELP progress, they happen to be in the first decile, so the bottom 10%. Graduation, they were in the third decile. Then the, this is the dual credit SQSS, they're in the third decile. The attendance, sixth decile, and the ninth grade on track, fifth decile. So they just put them all in a baking long list and just started them. Okay, Denise? You have just to keep looking.
Coming soon?
Yeah, this is science, isn't there?
Oh, great.
Keep looking, all right. As I told you, this is how the math goes here. So, all they did was this. If you look at the proficiency there, they, they found the mean of five and seven, which is six. It's 30% of the 100% of this total measure here, and so they get a 1.8. And if you've been watching the Olympics, I think you guys are all ready to understand the math of all of this, right? Then they go to growth, and they take, they had a three and a five. They found the average of those two numbers, which is four. It's worth 25% of the total comprehensive, so they got one point for that. And then for the English language proficiency, they had a one, and that's only 5%, so it's 0.05. Do you got the idea of it's going across here? Because on the very bottom, they add them all together, and this particular school, about a 4.3. And that's their comprehensive score. Because what's going to happen is that they're going to take all those comprehensive scores, and again, rank order them, the top to the bottom, to determine those bottom 5%. Okay, can you go again? Now, this is the part where if you could just completely ignore that little 1 through 10 on the far right side, it makes it so much easier, because you're going, how's 5%? So what they did is on this particular one, and this is why we have, even though we might know what our scores are for our district right now and for our schools, we have no idea where we fall in the ranking, because we don't know how anybody else did. So they're going with an idea here that in this particular one, let's say, they find a threshold, 5% of the schools were right here in the third decile or below. We don't know this because they haven't done this yet, but do you see what they're doing? It depends on how everybody else does to know where that 5% line is going to come in. And so that's why individual numbers, it don't mean anything right now. It's not that a, they will set that threshold, and that's how they're going to determine or identify who are those schools that are going to be identified for comprehensive support from the district, from, sorry, from the state, from federal government.
Well, that math doesn't seem to work for me. Maybe I'm missing something. But 5% of schools, if these are, these are still deciles?
No, see, at this point, no, no, no. And that's why I said, I wish they didn't have the same graphic there, because it's not helpful at all. So they put a rank order, they have them all just in order. And then they determine where is the number of the bottom 5%. The bottom 5% hit this number right here, and it just happened to be there.
Right, it's too bad that they made that.
Yeah.
I agree completely.
Makes you right off of that assume it's deciles again.
I know it, and, and so, I, I agree with you, they should have changed the ground. I didn't mean that.
If that were deciles, the math didn't work.
Denise? Now, this right here is showing, and for this, remember, we talked about, there's two different ways that buildings are going to be identified. Comprehensive, meaning they need, they need help in many, many areas. If they are not identified as needing comprehensive support, they then start looking at these subgroups. Is there a subgroup that they are in the bottom 5% for the state that we really need to, and this is called targeted support, so that we can provide targeted support, because overall, they might be doing all right, but they really are struggling, meeting the needs of blank. In this, in this particular graphic, it's their ELL learners. So those are the target groups right there. I just want you to take a look at this for a second. I think most of us are pretty familiar, pretty consistent with what we've, we've called subgroups. They're calling them subgroups that are targeted support.
We're not looking at deciles again, are we?
That one right there.
The one on the left is not.
That right, you're right. That one right there was for the comprehensive support. The ones we're looking over, they just, can you hit it again for me, Denise? Because you.
Okay.
Hit, hit again.
Yeah, there you go.
Okay.
Okay, so it's not decile on this side either?
No. And so, identified for targeted support. I don't think we quite need five minutes, but thinking about this part so far. So basically, what they've told you so far, this is for federal accountability. There's going to be, right now, they've told you of two ways they're going to identify schools that need additional support. Either comprehensive, which includes all of those different multiple measures. And then using those multiple measures, they're also going to identify schools that need targeted support for particular subgroups. So it's just different than the way they identified in the past, our most, our, our schools that need the most amount of support.
Our failing schools.
Their good schools.
We're not going to say that anymore.
That's what they say.
Right, I can appreciate that feeling and that sentiment there. There's a real regret that that really is not focusing on the school, but it's focusing on the kids that need help. And I like that.
How will this, oh, go ahead.
But, no buts, no buts, just like that. I'm not used to it yet, so I'll have buts later.
How will this, in all probability, affect us?
We'll probably have different schools that may be identified, because there's different measures that are going to be used. And it might also point out some areas that we need targeted support, particularly ELL, which we.
But that's not, that's never been a mystery to us.
No, we know that.
No.
I guess, I, I like data as much as the next person, because it can tell you a lot, but, and this is just my initial, initial feelings on this, is this is a solution looking for a problem in my, just, I mean, I see a lot of, of stuff up there, but it's almost, and I understand this is an example, but they had to get the example from somewhere. And it's automatically, when you throw this up to a general population, and what we expect is, is middle of the road. And then, I mean, it just, it seems to be that, no matter how, it kind of goes back to No Child Left Behind. No matter how well you did, your, your measure of academic progress, you know, if you failed to raise 3%. No matter how well you did, your measure of academic progress, you know, if you failed to raise 3%, even if you were above 90, you were still considered failing. And just the way that, when this data winds up, I need to.
It's not making a shift enough for you.
Yeah, I'm seeing a big difference between no child left behind and this. Although, again, I'm not used to this yet and I'm not sure, I haven't looked at it all that carefully enough to get my own sense of what's going to work and what's not going to work. But it certainly feels like an improvement over no child left behind.
I kind of wonder, anytime you're looking at accountability, it's always going to feel a little.
Right.
Intrusive. And I appreciate the fact they're looking at multiple measures versus looking at just one thing. I think that's a step in the right direction. There's a lot that we still have to learn. I'm not convinced it'll not morph as we learn more about it, just because, and I hope it does. If we find that it's not meeting our needs, I hope they do relook at what's a better way to do this. Okay, we're going to look at another example. This one's going to be a K-8, so it's more similar to what our K-8 was. All right, so just a reminder again. So they broke it down. If 40% is proficiency, so it was 20% for ELA, 20% for MAP, 50% for growth, and that's putting together both ELA and MAP right there. Can't do graduation because of K-8. And then 5% for EL and 5% for school quality or student success indicators. So it's absenteeism for K-8. Okay. And then you might as well put all the little numbers back down here because I think they got it. Okay, so here we go. So science, not there because we're just starting. Don't have graduation because of K-8 school. They don't have dual credit because we don't do dual credits in K-8. And ninth grade graduate, don't have it. Okay, so we're taking all the different measures.
But they still measure it? They still measure it?
No, there's nothing on it.
That'll be good.
So, okay, let's look at it up there. So the first one right there, that 2.4, that was for proficiency. Okay, the second number that you see right there, which is a 2, that was for growth. Okay, they put a zero down there. I guess they put it in there, but it's.
It doesn't count.
To measure, so it's zero.
Right, but all the other schools also are getting a zero.
Right.
Correct. Yeah, that's a, yeah. And so the E, the English language proficiency progress, that's your 0.05 you see there. And then the 0.3 would be your attendance for that. So this particular building got a 4.75, which again, doesn't mean much until you start comparing it to how did everybody else do.
Will this be broken down then, K-5 for us? So we'll have. No. It'll be K-8. By building. By building, okay.
Yeah, so for right now, they have, there's James Taylor, there's Home Link, there's North Mason High School, there's Hawkins Middle School, and there's.
The two elementarys, yeah.
Okay. So questions about how they're going to identify. So again, with that, they just rank order them, determine the bottom 5% and that's who they determine needs support. And then they do it for each of the different subgroups and that's for targeted support.
Okay, I'll just make a comment, a generic comment right after that. Oh, while I feel like it's an improvement over the old no child left behind system in certain ways and stuff like that, still, in general, I don't like ranking and comparing, there's value to comparing schools to schools and stuff, but I don't like the ranking part that leads me to competition. Education to me is not a competitive sport and shouldn't be. It isn't quite there yet, but that's what I'm going to worry about down the road. One of the things I'm going to worry about down the road is that we're going to, as a culture, society, as a country, or maybe just a state, since this is ours, that that's, we're going to get ourselves back into that again, which is to me the wrong place to go. That's my comment.
We know legislators who probably need to hear that as well.
So one, once they decide who the schools are that are in need of support, will that then be publicized as, look at these schools, they're not doing well? I hate that.
And the one thing they don't know at all right now is that they said, what you see on the OSPI school report card is not going to look the same as it did before because it just showed proficiency rates. And it's not going to look like what it's going to look like in the future. It's going to be something in between. So we don't know what this school will look like, what's going to look like. And again, taking it back to the regular slide, I'm just explaining this, I didn't actually.
We're not going to hurt you.
What? I don't know if people want to hear what I have to say, but this is the Washington State's attempt to deliver to the federal government a plan that meets the ESA performance. And this is what Washington State proposed and was accepted. That's what I'm presenting. So OSPI, this right here, what they're going to do is they're going to identify the schools. The one we didn't talk about very much, but it probably will impact us here, and they are aware that there's an issue, is that they will identify which schools will get comprehensive support because they're in that, they were below the cut score, the 5% cut score compared to all schools. And the very last one, we talked about targeted. The other one that they're working on right now, because this will impact pretty much every alternative high school we have, is they're also going to identify those high schools that have a resignation rate that's less than 67%, which depending on what your alternative high school looks like, is going to identify most alternative high schools that are trying to address credit recovery and an alternate rate of graduation. So they are aware that that is going to have to be something that they relook at because it's going to be disproportionate for alternative high schools. So what they're doing right now is that they, from a scale at the state level, they're going to determine who needs the support, what kind of tiered supports are they going to make available to schools, and how will the tiered supports be deployed effectively? And this is where, I'm not going to put this slide up for very long, it'll just be there for a moment, in their initial thinking. That in their initial addition of things, this is kind of what, from the state level, they are creating work groups around getting more and better information since this is a new system. So the work is being done behind the scenes at the state level through OSPI.
So how can we impact the decision for alternative schools to be, for their graduation rates to be determined on a four-year graduation rate basis? Because their goal is to graduate.
Correct.
Not, not to win the race.
And so it is a question that we're going to have to work and keep informed with how OSPI is addressing this right now. I think from our standpoint, we have to look at what are we doing to meet the needs of students within our school district? And if they receive, they're not called, we have to take away the failure language and they will be receiving additional supports. And I think we really just need to move away from that failure language.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Because they're serving a purpose that we really need, and that's to help those kids graduate. So on this right here, these are just some examples that they have put together. So the ones at the top would be for those identified comprehensive supports. And this is very similar to the kinds of supports that Hawkins has been receiving the last two years. So bringing in instructional coaches in both MAP and English Language Arts for the last couple of years at the middle school, bringing in a leadership coach to work with their leadership teams, providing additional funding so that you can create site-based teams to help support as well. So that's looking similar to what, the kinds of supports that they are providing for your focus schools right now. And then as you go down, they're less intensive support systems that they are planning to provide for our schools. A lot of questions, still in terms of what is this going to look like, but it's a brand new system. And that's what I have.
Any more questions? I'm just wondering how this will impact the teacher in the classroom. What will change for the teacher in the classroom?
I think it depends on where our, our buildings land in this. I know that, like, for example, I'm just trying to picture it. How did it impact the teacher in the classroom at the middle school level when they were identified for additional supports? There was a lot more focused professional development for them in terms of how to best meet the needs of their students. And so it made that different from the other buildings. They had more supports that were available to them because they had been identified as needing additional support. That was probably the biggest change for them. I'm hoping that another change will be, recently, one of the middle school teachers said, you know, it's the next step that we all get hired. Because under no child left behind, that was removal of staff and removal of principals. That's no longer a part of this system at all. So I'm hoping that it will take the fear of it away because that was quite the punitive. When the idea is, well, if you don't get any better, we have to get rid of 60% of the staff. That wasn't a good place to be. So I'm hoping it's an improvement in that.
I guess in, I'll take your opinion also, Dana's opinion, is, will demographics play a role in how they measure these? I mean, or is it just kind of, sort of like the report card is and was? Everybody's lumped in together, as it were, without taking into accountability the fluency of the community. I mean, are we being compared, for lack of a better option, Bainbridge? Are we, are these factors, which are real factors? Do they, do they make, do they make notes of, you know, North Mason is being compared to like districts, like with similar tax base, similar fluency, similar demographics?
I'm going to answer first, and then I know you're going to say.
Yes.
No, they don't take any of that into account. And so, but, but, let's shift it around some more. But does Bainbridge Island need additional supports? The answer is probably no. Because we have a higher need, we do need additional supports. So it is that, I know we're all thinking of it as a grading system and somehow we're being graded. If you think about it in terms of identifying who needs additional supports, yeah, those factors do play a part in that. We do need more support.
Right, and I would get that, but to average Joe system looking to move to North Mason, or whether it's the decision to vote yes or the, an initial or a proposal they have out there. And they just pull up there and they're just, hey, let's, let's measure up to Kitsap County schools because it's based on what North Mason County, but we affiliate more with Kitsap. You know, there's different factors that play a real, real role in our, in our success, in our opportunities that perhaps others don't face. So we might understand this, but to average citizen out there, is it going to be laid out there to where they can understand it?
That's going to be on us.
Somewhat.
Somewhat, to try to make that explanation. Because OSPI is not going to do that. So we are going to have to help our people in our community understand that, yeah, this is a comparison of all the separate schools in all 295 districts in the state from the lowest score to the highest score. But it's also a way for us to get help, meeting the needs of our kids and our families. And it's going to divide that based on all of those demographic groups. So it will show where we're doing well for a demographic group and where we need some more support. And it will generate support from the state that we may not have had at this point in time to help us meet the needs of that group. So it is going to be really on us to explain that this is not a, a way to determine that a school or a district is failing, but it's a way to figure out what needs we have that the state needs to support better.
And you are basically coming up with the same thing that I was worried about, competitive sport education. And that's, you know, the media can be real helpful with that. They've also been, you know, had a point accusing them of guilty of going along with the competitive aspect of it in the past, also the report, all these things that the state comes up with, the federal government comes up with. And that is exactly what Joe Public sees is what they do compared to Bainbridge or Brampton or whatever it is. That's, that's, I'm with you on that one.
Well, we just have to do our homework here and get the information, the underlying information out there instead of just the top layer that we need support and Kitsap County doesn't need support. However it's going to look, we need to explain clearly why that is. Why we, why we are identified as a school that needs support. And for instance, the James Taylor High School, my philosophy is get them to graduation and graduated, not four years, hurry up. That's not what that, that's not the whole philosophy behind that program. So we just have to do a good job of explaining that, I think.
And hopefully we can, and we can keep on it because I'm sure, I feel there's going to be forces out there that are going to be, not that they're deliberately against us, but that just naturally, the human being naturally looks towards those competitive things and looks towards the stuff that, and that's a good thing. We're going to have to be on top of it all the time until we have a system that changes and doesn't promote that.
Well, and from a real estate point of view, people shop for the best schools and that's the area they move to. So we have to really.
I want to go back to something I asked you before about from the teacher level as well. And one of the things that I do like about the multiple measures is that instead of always focusing on how well did they do on the smarter balance, if I could start focusing on, can I make growth?
Exactly.
That is something that I have control over. And if I'm a high school teacher, can I, can we get more kids are on track as ninth graders? And you can really focus on that and on graduation. It isn't just the end once a year test that all, all of your eggs are in one basket. So I think that if we can start showing some of those high points that we're making growth and we're making movement.
And there is that, there's growth built into the measures, which wasn't before. And that, that part I like a lot.
All right. So does the money come, come when they say we, we end up and then needs more support? Do we get funds for that?
Yes, the amount is the part that they're being very.
Oh.
Fake.
Fluid. But when we know more, we can tell you more.
Did you have a question, Don?
I just had to comment as an outsider, thank God I'm not doing like you guys are, in listening to all this. For John and me, this is way beyond new math. This is legislative math, which doesn't make any sense at all when you really get down to it. I mean, it's legislative math, they can't add two and do a four. They get three and a half or five and a half or five point two or something like this. It's not as simple as two and two is four. And then the last question I had, John already asked it, where's the money coming from to pay for this? Is that coming from our levy and our taxes? From the feds?
Federal.
But there's no federal money.
Through OSPI?
It's the federal, well, they provide, federal and state fund to provide the support.
Right.
So that would be competitive, they go through OSPI.
In the form of grants.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thanks, Lisa.
All right, so with that, we'll go ahead and unless anyone else has any comments regarding what we just presented, we'll go and adjourn the study session.
Yeah, and then we, we need to wait until 6:30 to begin.
Right, and we'll re-adjourn for the regular meeting at 6:30.
We're going to call the meeting to order. We'll start with the flag salute.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, tonight's February 21st, 2018 meeting. We'll have an approval of the agenda.
I move, we approve the agenda.
I got a motion, do I have a second?
Don't need it.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those against? None, okay, approval of the agenda. We'll move to the public comments section. And nice turnout tonight, and that's not what I'm looking for. There it is. We have, Nicole Gonzalez has requested to speak to the board. Would you like to do that now? All right. We also have a time at the end of the meeting, so now or at the end is, you're up.
Yeah, I may try to sneak through the snow and get back home.
Okay.
Okay. Hello, my name's Nicole Gonzalez. Tonight, you're being asked to approve an employee's performance and communication with the public and in student. with the public, and in student conduct and discipline, and I implore you to pause before doing so. You have been given information on what was done to my daughter last fall, and how the school and district mishandled it. Communication from Hawkins Middle School and North Mason School District needs improvement. When a student has endured assault, racism, gender discrimination, sexual harassment, and a threat of sexual violence, all options and processes need to be presented to the victim and his or her family. The victim should not have to be well-versed in policies and procedures to have action taken. There should be training in how to speak to victims and their families. Civil rights, equity, harassment, intimidation, bullying should not be treated as other duties as assigned. Who to contact, how to make contact, timelines, forms, all of this information should be offered without a request. There should be no reason for a victim to have to go to a state agency to find out what her options and rights are. North Mason should communicate actively and accurately what procedures a victim can follow without treating her like a hindrance, and without worrying if these formal complaints will besmirch its reputation. As for student conduct and discipline, one need only go to Facebook to see the disgruntled students and parents. Some may have baseless accusations, but those shouldn't drown out the ones that have merit. I know the state has its laws of discipline, but North Mason needs to revisit its policies and procedures. Are they equitably dispensed? Do they align with the severity of the conduct? Now, with all that is going on in public schools, now is the time for reflection. Survey parents and community members. Why do students withdraw from North Mason? Have they experienced harassment, intimidation, bullying, or violence at school? Did they report it? Why not? What was done by the school? And was the student and parent pleased with the outcome? I know perpetrators have rights, but what is North Mason doing about alarming behaviors? Is there a multi-tiered support system in place? Some of these behaviors are learned at home, and I know that the district cannot raise a child. But when a victim's mother comes to you, when the Kitsap son comes to you, when the district is on national news, when you are asked, did you know? What did you do? What change did you advocate for? Were you proactive in your policies and procedures? Did you do all you could do? You can answer honestly, and you can sleep at night. Please ask more questions and dig deeper into the self-evaluation that was conducted. Please think about the message you are sending to North Mason students when you say, "We wholeheartedly approve of this administration's handling of communication with the public and student discipline and conduct." Thank you.
Thank you very much. That was the only, she was the only person who signed in that would like to speak to the board. Is there anybody, any other public comment?
I'll speak.
Sure, come on up.
So I read the agenda that was emailed to us, right? And I got this ER 12 document, which I think she was talking about, you guys approving tonight. And I actually laughed out loud to myself. You guys used the word safe five times? You ask my son right now, he'll tell you he does not feel safe at school. He's told the principal, the assistant principal, myself, everybody. And, you know, what happens? Nothing. He, uh, he gets punched in the eye. Uh, the kid that punched him last year was back in class the next day. You guys are failing our children. You're not teaching them any accountability at all. You guys should not approve this. I don't think, uh, it works. It, it's terrible.
Thank you. Any other comment? All right. Moving on to board member comments, and we'll just start to my right. Laura?
Uh, I had the privilege of sitting in on a student roundtable forum that our student representative pulled together for us with about, I'm going to say maybe 20 students there, I'm not sure, 15 to 20. And they had a number of topics that they wanted to discuss, and it was very informative, and they felt safe, I think, bringing up their considerations, their concerns. And I'm looking forward to more of those student roundtables. They are the reason why we're here. They are what we consider every time we write a policy or approve a policy, and they are the reason for our existence. So they're our consumers, and I'm glad that we had, now have a forum in place where we can talk directly with them. So thank you, Spencer, for doing that.
I'm not sure exactly of the dates, but I've spent most of my active time doing legislative things. We had our day on the Hill, we had our day on the Hill after our last school board meeting, did we not?
Yes.
Yeah, so, I can't give you a whole history of that in a short time, but I'm a, on the legislative committee for the state, and I arranged five visits by people from our district, and also from other districts, to go to the legislature and talk about the budget. And so I shepherded five groups through the various cubby holes, and down various hallways at Olympia. And then three more times, I went back and testified, some with Dana, and some with Spencer. And, what was the name of the lady from our, our, we had two, it's another student?
Jenny Lewis, Jennifer Lewis.
Yeah, Jenny Lewis. And so, as you know, the other, there's a question about regionalization. How much money a school gets, in part, is determined by this regionalization factor. South Kitsap, Central Kitsap, and Bremerton all got 18%. Peninsula got 12%, and North Mason, zero. As a result of that, our superintendent informed us that 12 teachers, I believe, have said they would not be returning next year. This is awful. And so I wanted to do everything I could to put, block the dyke, I mean, you know, to, to get things on the right track. And it was heartening to hear that our friends in the teachers' union were also on board for us. As a matter of fact, we were used as a poster child for the state in what's wrong with the regionalization factor. And so it was heartening when we testified, for the union folks to be up there first, virtually presenting our coals, and then for three of us to jump out of the parachute, you know, you know, Bombay or whatever, and testify in a group as to what was at state for our kids, our district, and our constituents, on this certainly unfair and unjust regionalization factor. So it's been things such as that, that I've been mainly attending to this last month. It's been fun, it's just been very busy.
Thanks, Sean. I also.
And Craig was there as well.
Yeah. Also down Olympia, testifying on a couple of those bills. I'd like to, from personally speaking, thank the two individuals who spoke to us tonight. We do hear you. Your input drives how we also craft our policies. So, while we, in this meeting, we don't necessarily engage in a back and forth, we do hear you. And thank you for taking the time to come and speak with us tonight.
Here, here.
I don't have a whole lot to report. I'm still dealing with fallout from, of course, my cancer surgery, although I'm, no details for Laura's sake. But I'm recovering pretty well mostly, with some setbacks. Otherwise, I volunteer, of course, for the Builders Club, which you all know. And I had the wonderful chance to take them on a field trip with one of our people in attendance here, to read to kindergartners at both the elementary schools, which was a wonderful thing for the kids, both the Builders Club kids and the, the, the kindergartners. And the, a comment that, well, actually, that fellow right there made was that the teachers were, no, actually, it was the substitute teacher that came along with us that had the comment. All the kindergarten teachers had mentioned how the kids responded, and were quiet, and listened, and that sort of stuff. And he says, why can't you come every day, so that we can get some more done with them and stuff? The peer, it's not a peer pressure thing, but just having the older kids read to them, and attend to them, was a real, you know, good thing. Of course, the research has always said that when you have people reading to kindergartners, or to any kids, that that's a good thing. In any event, that was a really fun event. We got lots of pictures and stuff like that, except for the kids that weren't allowed to have pictures taken. And it was a, a great event. So I'm real pleased about that, and I didn't suffer too much with what, my other issue there. Otherwise, I'm working on, still, because we have another meeting this coming Monday for the Scholarship Foundation, on the, the financial side, since I'm the treasurer. As you remember, I brought up that the Girl Scouts were changing my computer. And they did. And I did everything I could to make sure that stuff didn't disappear. Had an external hard drive, and I had a thumb drive to store everything on there. And I got everything on there, and I thought, this time, unlike all the other times, I'm not going to lose data. Get the new computer, plug the new, the things back in, actually, it's to a whole different setup there. And from 2014 to 2017, where did it go? For not everything. Most of it was Girl Scout stuff that went, but there were some things that were just glaringly missing in the scholarship, and other whatever. That's not school district stuff, that, because that's a different computer and stuff, whatever, but it's still, it relates. In any event, I've been trying to pick up those pieces and get that data together, because we're having an important financial meeting this coming Monday for the Scholarship Foundation. And by the way, our endowment is over 1.2 million now.
Wow.
And we're feeling really good about that. So, that's it, end of my report.
Thank you, Art. And student board member comments? Spencer?
Um, at the high school, we've been busy planning our mock car crash in Frome, which is coming up this spring. We had a blood drive on Friday, and that was, we got a lot of people to do it, and it was kind of interesting, that all the blood that we collected in the blood drive was sent down to Florida for the shooting. So that was.
Awesome.
Yeah. And then we had the student roundtable today, which was really good. We have another one planned tomorrow.
All right. So with that, we'll move into the consented items. I would like to pull one of the items out of the consent agenda with approval of the majority of the board, and that is the policy 6050, which is financial management?
That's good, I was going to ask that very same thing, so, yes, I agree.
You ready? All those in favor of, we'll have a motion to pull that?
I'm, I move that we approve the consent agenda with the removal of policy 6050, financial management, to consider it separately.
Okay. All those in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So moved, okay. So, move into that policy, 6050. The fund balance of increasing our fund balance from four to six percent.
Eight.
To eight to 10%. I really appreciate that. I think I remember when I first kind of got involved with the school district, was when recession started, and we had the mid-year funding pulled, or funding pulled mid-year. And that was a really scary time for the school district. And as it was, now with our, moving this to a higher end, we can cover at least a month's payroll on our own. So, I just wanted to acknowledge that, and really, I think that's a very good financial move on our part.
And that's really our motivation for doing that at this time. We've had that, that experience that you had a few years ago, but even the last couple of years, when the legislators had not finished their work in the summer, we were in danger of not having a budget passed, and not being able to pay our employees. Because we would not have had enough money in our fund balance, we would have had to decide who got paid and who didn't. And we don't want to be in that situation. So that's the reason. Ashley did the math and determined that exactly what would cover our, we would need, for example, if you look, our January payroll is 1.8 million. So making, moving it to 8% would have our fund balance larger than that 1.8 million, so we would be able to pay everybody a salary if we had a month when, for some reason, we didn't get a portionment, or.
Well, I think this is a good idea. I was with Craig back at the time, and, and it was Laura and Art as well, when David Peterson was superintendent, and you folks probably remember, when the legislature gave us the money, and then, what was it, around December? It was in the middle of the year, after we were well, you know, going along, and then they pulled back the money they'd given us. Well, if you're not managing your things well, that's when things are going to fall apart. And we did not lose, I believe, a single employee, because we have kept a, we've been very conservative traditionally in how we manage the public's money. And we were able to weather that in a way that was good for our employees, and, you know, good for our students, and, and the district. So I think that this is a step further in that direction, and I certainly support it.
So I entertain a motion for approving policy 6050.
We're already on that. Didn't we already have that motion?
No, we had the motion to approve this consent agenda, minus this.
Okay, I'm, then I was confused. Does that mean that we have approved the consent agenda?
Yes.
Minus that policy.
Okay. Well, I had it backwards. So, I would have liked to have talked about some of the other things first. No, that's okay, it's just I misunderstood. And I thought that we would then be going into the two different things separately. You know, I'll live, it's not like I wasn't going to vote against it, but then, so I understand that your reason for pulling out policy 6050, the financial management one, was really to highlight it?
Yes.
Not so much that you had issues with it?
I didn't have issues.
Okay, I was wondering if you had issues, and that's why.
Yeah, yeah, no.
Otherwise, okay. All right, so that, at this point, the consent agenda is done. All right. I'll, I'll pay attention better next time then. What I'd normally like to see is, is we have a chance, you know, ask for, what's the right word, discussion on the consent agenda items, so that there are, if there are questions, we can, we can deal with them. And it may, it hasn't happened, but it may come up that we would at then want to pull something out, because there's an issue that we have.
Okay.
Anyway, so.
My, my mistake, I apologize.
No, that's all right, you're new at it, and I didn't follow and pay attention to it, but now I get it. So, so, so you, anyway, you need a motion about 6050. So I will move that we, that we accept policy 6050, financial management, or move to approve that, policy 6050, financial management.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Moving on to, sorry. Agreements, oh no, I'm sorry, board development linkage. Nutrition service receives grant.
Yes, and I've invited our nutrition services director, Michelle Waller, to tell us about the grants that she has received for the district.
Hello. So, this year's been exciting, because we implemented a pod breakfast for Sand Hill. And so, based upon a grant we received last year, we were able to get more mobile hot boxes and cold boxes, to be able to have, the kindergartners have their own area where they can get their breakfast, in first and second grade. And that's been very successful, because it increases the participation for the students. So this year at Sand Hill, we've gone from 50% participation in breakfast to 70%.
Wow.
And the state average is 30 to 40%. And Belfer Elementary is also up in the high, high 60% for participation as well for breakfast, and they do kindergarten, breakfast in the class for kindergarten. This year, I've applied for the Meals for Kids grant, Kids Grant for breakfast, and so that was approved, so we were able to get new serving utensils, a new milk cooler for Sand Hill this year, and new trays for both elementaries. The previous year, I was able to get a grant for Belfer Elementary to get a new dishwasher, new steam tables, new ovens, and hot boxes in Sand Hill as well. So we've been able to, over the past three years, update those kitchens of the older schools, at no expense to the district.
Great.
And this also year, I'm also waiting for, hopefully, one more grant to be able to get new refrigerators for Sand Hill Elementary, and a new steam table, and then both elementaries will be completely updated with new equipment.
Nice.
Do we owe you the cookies?
Yes, we do.
Those are excellent.
Oh, good, I'm glad, glad you liked them.
First, thank you for all these other things. And by the way, thank you for the cookies.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
So what's your, what's your magic? How are you getting all these grants?
I think it's mainly the wording of the grants and really expressing the need of the district. I also focus on the percentage of our free and reduced students, and so we are a higher need district, and so that's very helpful. We also really promote wanting to have safe food and quality, because we want the kids to enjoy their meals and come back for their meals and not feel like it's, you know, just kind of cold, icky stuff that sometimes you see in the news. We do a lot of scratch cooking, we've reformulated a lot of the recipes to be able to have the whole grain and things like that, where it doesn't taste like it's whole grain. And so that's kind of been a lot of fun, reformulating and making things new again for the kids. And now the younger kids, they don't know any different. The seniors, they were a little more difficult, but, but as the years go by, the younger kids, they don't know, you know, the changes, they, they don't know what they are, and so. But with the grant, a lot of it's just the wording and trying to make sure that they see the need of the district and the need of the students.
Good job.
Thank you, Michelle.
I got a comment to, for her sake, it's for your sake too, but the Builders Club, you know, that's my favorite thing that I do as a volunteer. But, you know, we have a setup, she, her department cooks the donuts for the Builders Club, which the Kiwanis Club pays for, so that the kids have a snack. And that was always, of course, the way to induce kids to come to Builders Club. This fellow here remembers that, because he was in it. As a matter of fact, he was our secretary one year. In any case, occasionally, and this is what I really like about what she's helped us do, is something new might come down the road, and the Builders Club are willing testers. And I keep saying, we'll pay for it, because we will. But she says, no, you won't have to, but we will. The stuffed crust pizza was the best example of that. We have each kid, when they try it, write their comments. Of course, now we've learned the hard way that you have to watch out, because the kids influence the other kids. And if you get one kid who said, oh, this is terrible, they start to make all of them say terrible things, so you have to isolate or say... And we, fortunately, when that one came, we had one kid who was getting everyone to say terrible things, and then the president, this was your predecessor, or Jesse, who said, this is really good. And all of a sudden, everyone else started thinking different. So anyway, it's kind of interesting, but thank you for that opportunity, and hopefully we'll be able to keep doing that for you.
Definitely have some new, new items that are being sent to us. So that's the nice thing, is that they'll send us new items and we can, at no cost, and then we can go ahead and have these little focus groups, to be able to see what works. And, you know, every age group is different.
Would should you ever need testers?
Exactly.
If I had the kids and wanted to see on someone else before you, but to them, I would certainly be willing to volunteer.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
All right. Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
Thanks, Michelle.
All right. Now, next up on development linkage, March 19th through the 25th, 2018, is School Retirees' Appreciation Week.
Yes, and we wanted to bring that up now, because our next board meeting is in the middle of the week, and it always feels a little off to be making a proclamation when the, the week is half over. And we are very thankful in our district for our school retirees, because they often come back and help us out. Still, many of our substitutes in both classified and certificated positions are retirees from our school district or another school district, and they have moved into our area, so we're very thankful for them. And I wanted to make sure that we had an opportunity to say that publicly in our meeting. So like I do with the other proclamations, I will read this one aloud. It is shorter than some of Governor Inslee's proclamations. Whereas the state, the Washington State School Retirees Association recognizes all retired school employees, and whereas the Washington State School Retirees Association educates and assists retirees in meeting the special challenges retirement brings and works to improve their general welfare. And whereas the Washington State School Retirees Association aids in advancing education by supporting high educational standards. And whereas the Washington State School Retirees Association promotes group and individual involvement in charitable projects and activities, sponsors scholarships, and maintains interest and participation in educational and community activities. And whereas the Washington State School Retirees Association supports and encourages retired educators to remain active in the education profession through volunteer activities associated with learning. Now therefore, I J. Inslee, Governor of the State of Washington, do hereby proclaim March 19th through 25th, 2018, as School Retirees Appreciation Week in Washington, and I encourage all people in our state to join me in this special observance. Signed, this 17th day of January, 2017.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. Next is superintendent's update, the budget status update for 1718.
So, based upon Art's comments during the last meeting, I've made a little update to the presentation. I think this is actually going to be very beneficial here, coming into the next few months, because you guys are going to start seeing some variations outside of what was budgeted. So this will help explain it in a little bit better format. So to begin with, for January, revenues did end up being lower than budgeted and expenditures were higher than budgeted. Basically, what ended up happening in January each year, our apportionment is evaluated. And it's September through December is based upon our estimated enrollment that was budgeted from the prior year. So in January, they relook at that and they actually give us money based upon our actual figures. So we saw an increase in enrollment over what was budgeted. So you would expect to see our, our revenues having increased. The downfall for us this year was that, oh, and I guess it depends how you look at it, our sped enrollment decreased, okay? So because our sped enrollment decreased, we had a significant amount of sped dollars that the state then came and took back, because they had overpaid us in September through December. So they took that, those dollars back. They don't give us less than zero dollars in one program or another, but they can drop it to zero. So we saw a few programs, like for infants and toddlers, that we got zero dollars for, where we would have normally received funding for that. That caused our revenues to dip a bit this month. In the future months, though, once we've done that catch-up for that sped payback, we'll see an increase in our revenues in those areas. Our expenditures did increase this last month based upon a multitude of factors, which I detail under the General Fund Yearly Budget Status Progress section. These three areas that caused our expenditures to increase are multiple facility maintenance projects that had to be completed but were not budgeted for. So these are breakdowns, things that we wouldn't have anticipated but ended up needing to be fixed. They increased special education costs for high-need students, so although we've seen a decline in sped enrollment, we've seen an increase in costs associated with our sped students that we do have. So they're higher need, so we have higher costs associated with those students. We've also seen an increase in payroll and benefit expenses due to negotiated rates that happened after the beginning of the school year. So these are expenses that we wouldn't have budgeted for, because we wouldn't have known how much those raises were going to be. So, but our year-to-date figures aren't looking too horrible. Our expenditures, year-to-date, were about 135,000 under what we are, over what we had actually budgeted. So we're at about 11.3 right now. We technically had budgeted to be about 11.1. Our revenues year-to-date were about 127,000 under currently, 128,000 currently, but we should catch up on the revenue side over the next few months, once we pay back our spend. The rest of our fund balances, for general fund, we did drop a little bit lower than where we were at last year, due to these increases in these maintenance costs that we ended up funding in the month of January, and the increase in payroll and benefits that got paid out due to the new negotiated rates. January was the first month of those new payments for our classified staff, so that's where we're seeing that, that increase first come into play. For our other funds, our budgeted status for our other funds, we're trending for all other funds right where we would expect. We've just, we've seen about, about 100, a little bit over 100,000 more in capital project expenditures. So we have about 3.6 million. I did just receive notification today that we have about 200,000 coming in from state match for the rest of the buildings. We're slowly getting down on that state match, so we're about to exhaust it, but we have another 200,000 coming. Debt service, we're at about 1.4 ASB, we're at 352. And then transportation vehicle, we, they surplused a bus, so we got a little bit of money back for that. So enrollment, which is always a fun category, Art, you were talking about the enrollment last month, wanting to see that increase from after winter break, so I went and I pulled our numbers for the last two months, so that you would be able to see that increase. Now, the numbers that you're seeing there for February, those technically, although they've been reported to OSPI, they're not on our OSPI reports yet, but that is the number that will be on it, once they finalize everything they need to do on our end. So right now, we're trending at about 2,196. We're getting really close to that 2,200 mark as far as enrollment goes. Overall, we're still seeing about 50 kids over than what was budgeted for this school year.
Do you know what the head count is, just off the top?
No, I don't know that off the top of my head, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's all right.
It's, we can get that for you.
Yeah.
I would just ask about the body count.
Yeah. Yeah, I normally, I, I, on my side, I tend to focus on the FTE, so I don't know that off the top of my head, but we, but we can easily get that. So that's what I have basically for the month of January. In these upcoming months, as Theller work is completed, you're going to start to see our expenditures start to increase more over what was budgeted, because the Theller project wasn't included in our budget for this year, and that was, that was a larger chunk of funds. So you're going to start to see that, as well as those payroll increases and the benefit increases for our classified staff and for our bus drivers. It was obviously very important to ensure that we, you know, gave the staff the raises that they deserved, but we're going to see that as an increase in expenditures, overbudgeted in these upcoming months. Any questions?
I think so.
Perfect. Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
All right. The next item is the Superintendent 2018, 19 Budget Guidelines. These guidelines are based on meeting the requirements of Executive Requirement ER4, which is listed on the first page of the guidelines, and just kind of review the, the expectations of how we do our budgeting in North Mason. And the second page of the document is where we really actually get into what the guidelines are for this year. And we're basing the guidelines on our district focus, which is eliminating achievement gaps, ensuring, ensuring that all students, students meet or exceed grade level standards, and that every student has the opportunity or does reach their full potential. So our budgeted enrollment next year for FTE is, you'll see a significant jump. This is actually a very conservative estimate based on the different demographic guidelines that we look at for doing our projections, and then also considering the changes in the community, the building projects that are being started or, or well underway and that are anticipated. So we're in budgeting for enrollment at 2283, plus or minus 10. FTE, not head count. Running the numbers just exactly to formula would put us actually quite a bit over 23 FTE. That's a pretty significant jump. We've made more like a, between a 3% and 5% growth per year for each of the last several years, so this is closer to that average. And I think probably it's a little hot, a little higher than some of the years, but it's very, very much what we anticipate. So we're looking at continued growth in our enrollment across the district. And when we talk about allocations, although we do know that our allocations are changing under 2242, and we will have more money to spend in many areas, many of those dollars will be in areas that are fenced money, that, you know, for example, more money in LAP, but with very specific guidelines as to how it will be spent. Some of the guidelines and definitions of how we can spend dollars are actually still in flux, because the legislature is considering a number of bills that would make adjustments to how they determined we were funding, funding schools in the last session. So the guideline is, guidelines as written currently are vague in some areas. This is a draft, and we expect to, as the legislature closes up business in the next two weeks, to be able to put some more firm numbers and specific guidelines in place that are left a little bit more vague here right now. So that's kind of where we are. We do, we are, we are estimating that our levy collections for 1819 will be 4.6 million, as stated here. There, in the following year, they will drop significantly, not because the, not because the community didn't vote the same sort of dollars going forward, but because under the state, new state budgeting documents, we will have to pull back and not collect all the dollars that the community voted for the district to collect on our levy, because the state is collecting some state school funding dollars instead. And they are, and we will be limited at this point, and this could change within the next two weeks, but we will be limited to a, limited to a collection that equals $1.50 per thousand of taxed real estate. So that's where we are. And I did put our ending fund balance in anticipating at eight to 10% in here, as you just approved in 6050. That could have changed, had you decided not to approve. This is definitely a draft, and each week, Ashley and I and Carolyn in HR are meeting to update this. We anticipate meeting with each of our bargaining units in the next few weeks to kind of start some initial conversations, not necessarily about the bargaining piece, because we are meeting with some of our units on bargaining as well, but to get their input on some of the areas where we'll be making budgeting decisions that are not things that we have to bargain, or need to bargain, or want to bargain, but areas that we want our staff to have input on decisions that we'll have to make. So, any questions?
I do.
Yes.
Going way back to the top, you don't have to scroll, about your, the enrollment expectation, that is a big jump.
Mm-hmm.
Are you really confident that that is going to happen? And can you, you did, you did address some of why, but could you elaborate a little more?
Yeah. We have seen a, a growth trend that it is not going to be stopping in kindergarten. And that, as that moves through the grades, you know, a couple of years ago, we had four classrooms at each school at each grade level, and some only three. In first and kinder now, we will, next year, we'll have five teachers in each of those grades and each school, and that continues to grow and expand. We have growing numbers in the high school, and even though we also have growing numbers going to running start, we have growing numbers staying at the high school level. And our smallest classes that we've had in the last few years have been moving on and out, and so our, we do not have, our classes are bigger than we still have in school.
Okay, so it's not just that we're getting a large influx of kindergartners, it's across the board. Is that attributed to people moving into the area?
Yes, it is, partially. We do have a lot of growth moving into the area. We've had a number of, a much larger number of transfers in at the secondary level than we have had in past years. We have more families who are moving in from out of the area, not just local transfers. That is becoming a stronger pattern for us. We also have some big, small, and big building projects that are starting, that will be single-family houses, so we kind of have to prepare that at least some of those will be filled with families. And we have indication from the Kitsap Naval Base that another carrier group is homeporting in Bremerton, so that will bring more families into the general area as well. in Bremerton, so that will bring more families into the general area as well.
I'm remembering years ago, when we were dropping regularly, and that the thinking that we all went through, and you'll remember this too, was, we needed that belfare bypass, we needed the sewer, we needed the widening of Highway 3, and we've got two out of the three. And I always thought that it was the bypass was the one that was really going to kick us running with that, and that hasn't happened yet. And yet, so, I'm not concerned, I'm just, we expected, once we built the new high school, we expected to start growing up, because of the attraction of that. And we did see growth because of that, growth in students transferring back in, who we were losing before. In any case, I'm just pleased, I'm just curious, you know, if that bypass comes through, which they're threatening again, about it happening, we might see some really big growth fast.
Well, we might see some really significant growth, and we are trying to plan for it. We'll be meeting soon with our facilities committee, to kind of get their input on some things, but there is a very large building community that's being planned. We expect to, we'll be having some conversations with the landowner there about some mitigation. But, if numbers continue as projected, we expect that in the not-too-distant future, North Mason will have three elementary schools, rather than two. And we'll be looking at expanding our classroom space at the secondary levels as well. So, before too long, we are going to have to talk about what we're going to do to replace belfare, and what we're going to do about a third elementary school to house the students that we will need to serve.
Thanks.
Is that it on the success plan review?
Yeah.
All right, so capital projects, Feller.
Yes, well, let's start with Feller. Because last month, Laura asked for an update, and kind of missed what you were asking, but I have a document for you, that's kind of hot off the presses. But I am making you aware of an emergency situation, as we're working on the remodel at Feller. During the week of February 12th, it was brought to our attention by contractors conducting renovations, that the attic insulation had been severely damaged and contaminated by rodents. It has later, we have later determined that the working conditions were unsafe for them due to the contamination. The renovations have ceased, until the contaminated materials can be restored. We expect to have a bid, and accept a bid, to do that within the next several days. Multiple companies have been contacted to try to contain, get the quotes. This is not really a good time in their calendar, to get companies who are willing to give us those quotes, but we are, we're getting that done. We will have to remove all the insulation, we will have to replace the insulation, the building will be treated by an exterminator, but it will also be treated with antibacterial spray, that will protect the building and its future inhabitants, and make sure that everything is safe and clean. So, all of that has to happen, before we can continue, and this document is to let you know that that's what we're working on. I anticipate, we will not have three quotes that are willing to do the work, within the timeframe we want it done. So, we are going to go ahead and accept a quote outside of that three minimum kind of thing, and move forward, using our district emergency sole source approval. So, that will be on, we will probably accept the quote during the interim, and that will be on the consent agenda next month, but with hopefully the work having been completed by that time.
Have an idea of what the price range is going to be?
They, no, not right now. They, it's been extremely difficult to try to tie anybody down to get out there. The damage that they saw, when they were, it was actually a contractor who notified us, because they were up there drilling holes in the ceiling, and it was pretty bad. And so, they opted to cease work, until we could get it fixed. We've been trying to get people out there to even look at it, and give us a quote, and unfortunately, due to our distance away from contractors who could come out and do that type of work, and just availability in their schedule, and the size of the project, it's not a huge project. We just haven't been able to get anybody out. Our first appointment is on Monday. I'm not expecting anything more, and let's cross our fingers and knock on wood, anything more than $15,000. So it would definitely fit within the range of a three quote project, but unfortunately, I don't think we're going to actually be able to get three vendors out there to give us a quote, in the timeframe necessary. All work is ceased, until we can get this done.
Okay.
So, other than that, the HVAC is almost completely installed, the water system has been updated, the sprinklers and the electrical will be finished, when the building is safe to re-enter. So, that's where we are on Feller. So, we've been working with Head Start, and with our own preschool. Our kids will remain in their current location, until the rest of the year. The building will probably be done before the end of the year, but that will be, give the staff time to move in, and get things, everything beautiful and pretty for the start over the summer. So, that is the plan.
Stadium update?
Stadium update, they are working very hard on the concession slash locker rooms building. We expect next month to have a bid to consider on the rest of the project, the seating and roofing of the seating, and that will finish up the stadium, so that the work can get done over the summer, in time for our first home game in mid-September.
Question regarding that? I'm going to interpret that to mean, that things will not be complete enough, and this is a leading question, because I had somebody in the community brought this up, and this is in relation to graduation. We're not going to be complete enough, to even consider having graduation outdoors. Is that correct?
No, we'll have workers there.
Right, okay.
And so, it will not be space that's open to us, at that point in time, if we're going to have it ready in time for the fall.
Anyone else have questions? All right, Full-Time School Resource Officer.
Okay, you will notice that a document, that we are entering in, you will be getting a document, we are going to enter into a memorandum of understanding with Mason County, to provide a significant portion of the funding, so that we can have a full-time resource officer assigned to North Mason School District, from the sheriff's office. This year, we have shared a resource officer with a number of the other rural districts in Mason County, outside of Shelton, and the reality is that we have shared that person, but we have probably used 80% of his time, because we are the only one of those districts with high school. And, you know, we have more students overall, than any of those districts separately. So, we believe that it's important that a school should have access, regular access to a resource officer. We hope that at some point, that we get specific funding from the legislators, legislature and/or OSPI, for districts to do that, but we think it's important enough, that some of our levy money be dedicated to ensuring that we have someone here on our site, that's available to our buildings, all of the time that we're open. So, we are going to sign an MOU with Mason County, and the resource officer that we have had most of the time this year, we will have all of the time in 1819.
Questions?
What are some of the things the resource officer does?
Well, there, obviously, there are times when we have incidents that occur, that go beyond school discipline, and that require that we contact law enforcement. And, you know, frankly, in our situation, being a rural district, if we only could rely on patrol, there may or may not be somebody available, when we need them.
Yeah.
And when we have a resource officer, they're here, when we need them. They also do a lot of education with our students, or they can, on different issues. They also, in our case, our resource officer is a part of our partnership with partnership leadership team, with our first responders, designing and implementing, and making sure that we have effective plans and training to follow up for those plans, whatever kinds of emergencies we might have, which often would need some kind of law enforcement support. They're not always the terrible tragedies, that like the one that occurred last week, it could be even in an earthquake, or those kinds of things. But, he's a part of that team, and helps us ensure that we have all of those pieces in place, that we need to support our kids and our teachers, as well.
All right.
One of the things that's really nice, when you have a resource officer, that hasn't always been available to us, but sometimes, in supporting our kids and our family, we need to make home visits, and he can be a part of the team that makes that home visit, that helps everybody deal with whatever situation is happening.
Any questions or comments? All right, moving on, Community Linkage Planning and Message of the Month. You have our district calendar for upcoming events. It would be my preference, that we kind of stay consistent with our message about school funding, especially this year, with regards to state levy, our levy, your property tax bills, if you've seen them already, have gone up significantly, because of the state property tax, which has been used to fulfill the Supreme Court McCleary decision. So, that is out there. Board Letter columnist, Art, you have March.
So, you're suggesting that I focus on the school funding thing?
I think it's a good one, especially as people get their property tax bills, and realize that some may have gone up considerably.
So I might stop by, and get some information from you on that. When is the deadline, or the time that we need to have this turned in?
Anytime is fine.
Anytime, it says March?
Yes, well, it would be nice if we did it by like, March 2nd.
Ooh, by March 2nd.
No problem there, right?
That's different from anytime.
If you ask me for a deadline, I always give you a short one.
Right.
Okay.
And then we'll have a joint board letter for April, so.
Yeah.
All right, moving on, Assurance of Organizational Performance and Policy Review, and the first one, it will be into our monitoring reports. The first one is ER9, Communication with the Public, and this is executive requirements.
Yes.
So.
There were two things that we've done differently this year, that I wanted to point out, as a part of that report. One was the decision that we made to discontinue the Mason County Life Page, when the Kitsaps End determined that they were no longer distributing the Mason County Life to all of the households in our district. And to replace that with our newsletter, which we have now done two additions to the community. The most recent one, I think, got to most homes by late last week. And the other is, when we did some different hiring in the business office, and we had the front desk position open, we looked for someone who could really manage our presence on social media, and when we hired Sharon, that was one of our key criteria, and we have seen some, I think, improved social media presence, and certainly, she spends quite a bit of time on that, and on our webpage, and those kinds of things, and making sure that we get our messages out, and also looking for things that we might need to make sure and communicate with folks about. So those are two things that we have done different, over the last year.
Any comments or questions regarding ER9?
Well, I believe that the superintendent has fulfilled the requirements of this particular policy, in that it was crafted to be a communication policy to the public, maintaining and establishing strong links with the community support groups and key communicators, to keep them informed, and using multiple media resources, basically promoting and enhancing the role and the public profile of the board and the school district, as it connects with the community, and hears the community's voice in governing the district. So I believe that she has fulfilled the requirements of this policy, as we have written it. This policy does not necessarily mean communicating individual issues, it's more of a broad communication of, this is what's going on right now in the school district, oh, the schools are closed today, there's a good method of making sure all of the parents understand that and know that, as well as other community members who've signed up for that notification as well. So, I would like to move that we find the superintendent in compliance with this policy.
Got a motion to accept ER9, any discussion?
Well, I would just like to mention, I agree with what Laura has said, we have to look at this policy, and find out what it's designed to do, which is general communication with the public, and there may be, or may not be, particular exceptions to that, but what we wanted to do, the intent of our policy, was exactly as Laura has described it. And as one that makes his way around various sites in the public, one of the projects I'm doing, is a history of belfare projects, so I'm talking to people of previous generations, there are people here older than myself. And, I keep hearing good things, unprompted, about our superintendent, and I'm always delighted to hear that, particularly when I did not, you know, ask. So, my sense, from moving around the community, in a variety of different circles, is that our communication with the community is in generally quite good shape. And I like these new things on Facebook, I've never liked Facebook myself, I can use it every once in a while, but I think that we are making use of new media, in an effective and efficient way. A number of people have told me how quickly they were contacted about, you know, the days of school would not be in, and for the reasons, or when it was going to start late, or whatever. And I think all these things are exactly what the policy was designed to do.
We have a motion on the floor, all those in favor of accepting ER9, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, so moved. Next one is ER12. We should have to pull up, because the internet is moving slow here for me. Student Conduct and Discipline.
Okay, so, we have worked hard to maintain a code of conduct, that is in compliance with state requirements. It has been an interesting procedure, or process, and continues to be so, because the state requirements are changing, sometimes more than once a year, and, which makes it difficult, when we're trying to communicate to our families, and have something that they can rely on. We work, then work across the district, to ensure that we enforce the code, and we do have an emphasis on reducing the number of school days lost to do disciplinary action, based on helping kids learn better behaviors, so that there are fewer disciplinary actions, not just choosing to not do them. It is sometimes hard for our staff to determine what actions to take, but they do use our guidelines as a starting place, and sometimes, they, based on the circumstances of the student, make adjustments to the guidelines, that administrator feels will best have an impact, and help the student learn to do the appropriate things in the past. As you know, when we look at data points, and charts, and kinds of ways to show you information, that too is changing, and one of the state data points, that OSPI has put together, a lot of information on the website, on their website, is student discipline, and that was being considered for one of those SQSS factors, that Lisa talked about during And that was being considered for one of those SQSS factors that Lisa talked about during the study session. As you noted, it, what student discipline was not included in the final state school report card kinds of information. But I think it's interesting to note, I looked at that data because that is the data that's out there and available, and there are probably at least 50 different charts of different information about our district that can be shared or can be accessed on the OSPI website. And one of the things that was interesting is we have not really shown a decrease over the last five years, which is what is currently tracked, in the, this average percent of days of suspension, you know, based on kids in school. So how many kids have suspensions and how many days? The state average is 3.5%. And over the five years, we had a low of 3.5%, but our highest was last year at 5.8%. So it's been up and down, and it seems to be on a little bit of a down this year, but we're only halfway through the year, so I'm not sure how that's going to show out. As you know, from the study session, in all of the areas that we're evaluated on, we are asked to evaluate ourselves by looking at the different subgroups of students that we serve. And so the chart that I did show you is a chart that shows where we compare to the rest of the state in serving each of those subgroups. So the top number on the chart is based on a total student enrollment, and this, the student enrollment number looks higher because the student enrollment number they show for last year was 2472. That's anybody who was enrolled any time during the year. It's not on any one day, which is when we do our enrollment for everything else. So it is going to be a little bit higher because the kids who moved away still get counted as having been enrolled here at some time during the year.
It's closer to a body count, right?
But a running body count, not a actual body count. So it's a little bit of a weird number. It's not, it doesn't feel right to start with that as the number, but that's where they are. But then you compare how our subgroups are doing to the rest of our district, and you can see how we're doing in each of those subgroups as compared to the state. So overall, in, we're right about even with the state when we look at all. As you can see from the chart, that line that goes down the middle of the chart is right there at the edge of that brown document. But then when you look at our subgroups, there are places that our ELL students are doing better or having fewer discipline moments than other ELL students in the state. But we, our low-income kids are getting suspended more. Our boys are getting suspended more than boys across the state, or at least on average. Our homeless students are being suspended more. So there are things that we need to look at at the building. Are we being as fair as we should be when we're determining discipline responses? And are we making sure that we're creating environments that allow all of our subgroups of kids to be successful at school? So those are things that we have to address in our buildings. Because ideally where we want to be is that everyone is at that 1.0 line, and you can see we're not there yet.
What's 504?
The 504 plan is under the American with Disabilities Act. So a student or an adult with a 504 has a plan for accommodations to be successful because they have a disability or, yeah, usually a disability. And it can be a temporary disability. When a kid is, has a broken leg and is on crutches, they can be on a 504 that's more of a medical plan. But kids with 504s often have diagnoses that haven't led up to an IEP, but still have a significant impact on their ability to be successful in school. You will find kids with ADHD on 504s. You will find kids with other health issues. It's kind of a broad descriptor, but there are a lot of different reasons that we write 504s for kids. They can be for academic reasons. They can be for behavior reasons. They can be for physical reasons. But they're, what are we doing to accommodate so that you can have a clean, even opportunity for success with the general ed average student in the building?
Thanks for the explanation on the chart. Even though the paragraph above the chart does try to explain what you're looking at, I found it really hard to interpret or to understand what I was getting at. Your verbal description put it in place, and now I see it quite easily. So that's, for whatever that's worth. I had a hard time with that chart again.
Okay.
Until right now. Now, boy, it just jumps clear. Totally understand it. But I do have a question about the chart, too. That would imply, the 1.0 apply would imply that for each of the categories, they have calculated something different. So it's a...
Yeah, and, you know, like last year, I showed you a different chart that kind of turned it the other way, so the lines went up instead of sideways. But we have seen improvement. The first year, we looked at this kind of comparison. We had many, we had at least a couple areas, three or four, that were actually above the 2.0 line, which would have meant that in that subgroup, those kids were twice as likely to be suspended as kids in the general group. So we're smaller than that, but we still have some groups, like homeless and 504, who are pretty close to approaching that 2.0. The goal, again, is everyone should be at, or at least very close to, that 1.0 line. The groups that are below the line are being suspended less than the average. So we have to ask ourselves, we really have to take a look at, are we being fair? And are we making decisions based on the event and the impact and not on any other factors? And so that's work that we do in training with our principals to ensure that they are being impartial and applying the standards appropriately and responding in ways that will help our kids be successful in school and be in school.
All right, here are a motion to, for ER 12.
Mr. Chair, I move that we accept the superintendent's compliance as satisfactory for ER 12.
Okay, we've got a motion. Any discussion?
Yes. This is, I'm going to bring this up mostly for the sake of the people in the audience, but it's really, it's to you as well. I heard some comments at the very beginning from the people that presented, and I, myself, didn't see anything wrong. Of course, these comments were new to me, anything wrong with what we've set up. And what this is, this is a, we're passing sort of a judgment on what's gone on so far. What I kind of thought I heard from the public here that did speak was stuff about changing it. And our time for changing that is next month, not now. So towards that end, if I may speak to anyone else, if you have some specific ways that, and if you would like to see this policy changed, contact us directly, email, telephone, in person or whatever. That is the best way to get information to the board members. We only get a chance to discuss and talk about this stuff right here. We cannot do this outside of the board meetings. So that's why the, we need to have the information ahead of time so that we can then deliberate. We're not allowed by law to deliberate any other time. And again, next month is the time when it's set for us to make that, make changes to this policy. So that's my encouragement to all of you. Meantime, for us, we are making a, you know, we're passing, whatever, we are dealing with what's gone on in the past based on what we've seen and how the policy has worked for us so far. So enough said.
Well, and I'd just like to add that this particular executive requirement deals with the offender.
Right.
The student who has the discipline issue and the conduct issue, and how to, how to work through that with that student and whatever that consequence may be. This policy doesn't deal with a student who feels offended. So whether or not we, I'm sure that there are procedures in place for that, but whether or not that's something that we want to talk about next month as we review this policy or not. But this is conduct and discipline of a student who is out of line, basically. That's my only comment.
John?
I'd just add, I think both these comments are useful. I would just add that one way in which folks can participate, we are elected by you folks to represent you. And all our material is public. Before a meeting, you can check and you get the same, you can have the same packet of information that we have. And one of the things that we go by is just a general system called policy governance. In other words, we don't run the schools. We set the policy. We govern. And of course, if we don't find the criteria met, you know, then there are things that we can do. If you see on these policies, I invite you to look over our shoulders more often or consistently because these things are transparent. How we govern is by a set of procedures that are out there in the public. And one of the things that we do every year, as you've seen us do this evening, is review those very policies. Is this working well for us? Is there some specific area that needs to be changed? And perhaps on the basis of your experience, there is something that needs to be changed. I don't have any kids in the school, and I've been focused on making sure there's a stream of money that comes to our school, you know, that's fairly, you know, from the state. And so it is great if people would, on these policies, because it's policies that we're in charge of, were to offer suggestions. And that's why our phone numbers and emails are right out there on our...
Website.
On our webpage and everything else. So I would just urge people to take advantage, full advantage of the opportunities that transparent government provides. And if you have suggestions on how any of these policies should be modified, you know, I would certainly welcome.
I share, I'm sort of uncomfortable, and I think my own personal discomfort is just national news lately of making these decisions. I think I'm still a little bit raw over the north, over the Hawkins Middle School, figuring my daughter goes there. But I do share the concerns, and I don't know if it's necessarily fairness, it's consistency.
That's a better word.
All I have is anecdotal evidence. Once again, I thank those who spoke tonight. This last week, I got an anonymous letter sent to me. And I would just like to ask anybody if they have concerns. Don't make it anonymous. I have a tough time personally making a decision when someone isn't willing to tell me who they are and put some context into it, help me make a good decision. But anecdotal evidence from my friends in the school district is, and this is where I'm having a tough time with this, is trying to take personalities out of it, but knowing it's a small town, knowing the personalities in the buildings that are making these decisions. I have, I have issues with some of those personalities. I would like to see consistent, I would like to see it come down that you will do it this way. And I don't know what that looks like. I'm not such a manner expert, that's your job. But I want to see it brought down. You will act in this way. You will perform these issues in this way. And I just, I see certain, certain personalities that just, that hasn't happened. So that's where my discomfort comes from this. So with that said, I will call for the question. All those in favor of accepting ER 12, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Moving on. Policy review. This will be student board members, member policy.
Okay, we've been talking about this since the state WASDA conference, and we talked about making some adjustments to our student board member policy and how we select those board members. And really wanting to get to that point where we kind of have, well, while we have two student board members, they will have overlapping terms, and they can serve for two years instead of one, which has been our practice. So that, for example, Spencer can serve again next year, and we'll have one new student selected so that he can kind of train them up. And then they can do the same thing the following year with another student.
Sort of like our positions.
Sort of like you guys. And so, and also, I eliminate number four, that the student board member would assist with publication of reports in the student newspaper because that's not, we don't have one at this point in time. So that's the changes that are recommended.
I'm trying to pull this up, I apologize.
And the other document is an application for students to fill out that we haven't used in the past, but it makes it a little more formal than the selection that we've used.
I did have a question regarding, in there, regarding the proposal about, some language about participation.
We actually have the same language apply that applies to you all.
Okay.
So a board member who has missed more than a certain number of meetings, the board can determine they no longer are a board member. And in this case, with the student board member, we would ask that the ASB provide us a replacement for the rest of the year.
Any comments?
So being that it's an action item, we have two things there. We should do two motions, is that correct?
Yeah. One is an application, and then one is the actual policy.
Right.
Okay, so I will accept a, a motion to approve the procedure proposal, GP 02-E6.
I move that we accept the student board member procedure proposal, GP 02-E6.
Okay, any discussion?
Change when we've been through it, so...
Okay. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right. I'll accept another motion to approve the revision to GP 02-E6.
Okay. I move that we accept the revision, student board member revision, GP 02-E6 as well.
Okay, any discussion? My voice went really high there.
I think the revisions we've got are good. I think we've learned, this is one of the examples in which we've learned from experience. And I think our experience with Spencer and his colleagues has helped teach us what would be the best policy. And I think that this is definitely an improvement. And after one year on the board and the things that Spencer has been through with us in going to the legislature testifying, I think that all that experience helps him to serve even better, you know, another year. So I think that this is a good idea because, hey, we go through this experience and then he can make use of it and then be a good mentor to someone else that's coming up.
Any comments? All right, all those in favor of accepting the revision, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? All right, so moved.
May I bring up something else?
Yes, you may.
It's not really something else. Jumping back to the student conduct and discipline report stuff, since it wasn't a unanimous vote, it would be pertinent to have some comments on the form that we have to fill out.
Yes.
And we really should do that publicly and whatever. So I'd like to just say, us to go back.
Go back to that?
Yes.
Sure.
So normally what we have to do is, the form gets filled out, and there's usually not very many comments at all because it's usually unanimous or whatever, and it's kind of, the onus is going to be partly on you to have what it is that you're not happy about, but the rest of us can also come in and chime in as well.
Yeah, I need to find them.
Denise, did you get the comments that he, that Craig made about consistency?
Uh, no.
Okay, that's what you're going to want on there.
Okay, yeah.
I replayed it, I replayed the video tomorrow.
Okay.
Oh.
So she can catch it tomorrow.
This is what we need to fill out. This is what we need to fill out. So we're gonna be checking a box there.
Yeah.
And the additional remarks here is what we want to have added into that. Because that, when at the end of the year, we'll be coming up to make the review and we'll put them all, all the different policies together and stuff.
So it would be in compliance with the following exceptions?
Yes.
And that you would-
With the consistency, yes.
Yes. Yes.
Fair enough. Okay, is that good with that?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Anything, what, you, you wanna, you wanna write, or not write them, but speak them again so that she can-
Yeah.
...record them?
She gets, she replays the-
Oh, she replays.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, that's good, all right, sorry I missed that.
Okay.
That's good enough? Anyone else?
No, I think that's a good idea. It's transparent. People have heard it once, it's available, the film will be available publicly, anyone can hear it. And then the language, you know, will reflect that.
Okay, great, thanks.
All right, so we move to the adjournment portion of the meeting. And once again, we'll open up announcements and comments by the public if they so wish.
Um, my name is Elsa Kerner. I'm a fourth grade teacher at Belfair Elementary. And I wanted to address what you had mentioned about going to the legislature and the 14 staff members who have resigned. Um, I'm one of those 14 staff members and it has nothing to do with money.
Oh, I understand.
Um, and so I just wanted that to be said and on record, like I, Belfair staff is the best staff I've worked with. I've been in three different districts. I would stay there forever if I just, there needs to be more support from top down. And so behavior is a big, big issue, so.
Mm-hmm.
I just wanted to, it's not money. We're not leaving because of money, so. That's, yeah.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Anybody else?
True.
Okay.
I'm not sure how you guys can approve something just by what she's reading to you. I think you guys should actually take a look at what's happening. It seems to me from reading this and these charts that perhaps you are or will be picking and choosing who to discipline in order to manipulate these graphs to the state. I don't understand, you guys say you're not in the day-to-day operation, so how, how do you know she's doing what she's supposed to do?
We have on our, um, we have reports from her that are detailed. And if we have questions about them, you know, we can, we can do that. One of the challenges that I've seen, and I welcome your comment, because there are people I've met in this, in the board business that think they're elected to run the schools. And I think one of the great things about this community is that you don't have me running the schools. Uh, and what I, where my judgment comes on, I was one of the people that voted. We had three candidates, you know, for the superintendent. I listened to them and along with my colleagues, selected Dana. And as, what we do is that this is a, we have a system for policy. And we have on the basis of what we hear from the superintendent, as you can see, you know, from the documents we get, well, that seems like we're going in the right direction. And then as our treasurer, as our financial officers indicated, here are the figures. So there are variety, and here are, here's the enrollments. You know, there's certain things that are very objective about this. And so on the basis of those, that information, and also by being out there, you know, I shop at Safeway. You know, I go to various organizations. And my number's in the book and my email's in the book. And so when we hear from folks, that's, that's relevant, you know, for our, for our concerns. So I, I, you know, part of it is data we get that seems to us credible or not, part of it's hard numbers.
Well, like Mr. Patty said, you know, there is no consistency. I think they hand out discipline, you know, just, here you go, here you go. Why does it matter if a kid is homeless or not, whether they get suspended? What does that matter one bit?
Well-
I was told, a, a child of a single parent might not get suspended because he has a single parent, but because I'm married, my wife works, I work, my kid will get suspended. Is that fair?
Well, that's not, actually, it's not necessarily true. We identify the kids that get suspended because it's a requirement by the state. They want to know those different subs, subgroups. It makes no difference to the school whether or not, and I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name?
Scott Borknaiton.
Oh, okay. Um, well, Scott, if we didn't have a level of trust in our superintendent, we would not have hired her. If we need more information, name by name by name, she'll give that to us. But that's not anything that we need to be able to make a decision about whether or not she's following the policy that we have put there. There are other policies and procedures that are in place that the administration of the buildings have to follow, that she is responsible for making sure they do that. Now, I don't know what happened with your son.
Oh, here, I gotta, I gotta, I'll tell you.
Well, that's really okay. It's, this is an up, up place to-
See, you don't care.
No, it's not that we don't care.
I would love to, I would love to have a copies emailed to me, my email address.
John?
Okay.
All right. Okay, we'll, we'll definitely look at that. But if I could say one thing, as a parent of, in the school, I mean, we have, I, I see it both at Belfair and Hawkins where my kids attend, you know, and, and being in here, you, I try to do the best job that I can, I know my colleagues are the same way, of, of being able to remove my dad hat and say, is the district operating the way that the state is telling us to operate? A lot of the discipline, and the superintendent and I had this conversation this morning, and I was probably venting, but, um, we have our hands tied a lot more compared to what it was even five, 10 years ago, as to what we are allowed and not allowed to do. Legislature's taken away a lot of our flexibility of how we can discipline, how we can apply discipline regarding days out of school and so on and so forth. Right, wrong, or indifferent, people who are not involved in education are making education policy and pushing it down on us. It doesn't help your situation. It doesn't make your feelings better. It doesn't, it doesn't give you help right now. But we're just trying to give you the overall picture of, of the challenge that we have. So yeah, so we set these, these policies and we, we, we get her reports from it. And a lot of it's what we see, I, I go into the schools pretty regularly. What I see, what I hear, friends, community members, what is given to us in the information, what is relayed to us in between meetings. And we have to make a judgment and a value decision based off that information. People are going to agree or not agree. And that's the beauty of this process. So while I, I wish we could make everybody happy and I wish the situation didn't rise to the point where you felt that they had to come to this level, th- this is the process of which we operate under. And like Art, Art said, you know, if, if you see this policy, you think there's changes that need to be made, the proper steps come to us at the time that we're not making a decision on it with information that's brought to us just a few minutes before a meeting. And, and we can get somewhere. So that, that would be my best advice. And I know it doesn't, doesn't solve the problem, it doesn't make you any bit happier, but that's, that's where we're at. Any other comments? Yes, ma'am?
This is my first school board meeting, but I figured I'd give my comment a due justice because I've, I have a four-year-old who's gonna go to school this year. And I'm terrified. I'm not scared to put him on the bus. I'm scared that he's gonna feel scared. Geez, I, I'm a crier, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
It's real.
But I'm scared that he is gonna feel scared and I have, this community talks a lot and maybe they should talk a lot more in here, may, you know, maybe we're at fault for not being here more, like, oh, thanks. Maybe, um, maybe that's where we're going wrong. But like you said, with like transparency with Facebook, I wouldn't say that I'm on Facebook all the time, but I've never seen anything, maybe just a video of you guys saying, "Come, come here." They're so easy to make. You can go on Facebook Live and say, "Hey, we're having this and this is what we're talking about." Um, I don't know how that'd reach me or whatever, but, um, that transparency. But I have a four-year-old who's smarter than a whip. And I'm terrified that he's gonna get left behind because he's not horrible. And so I think the discipline and the behavior has really got to change. Because I'm at a point in my life where I can stay. I grew up here, my whole family's here. I want to be here. I want to be that parent that supports the teachers and the principal and the superintendent and supports you. But I will leave. I will take my family. And I have a good family, a solid family that is from this town. And I think that, you know, as a standpoint of view, go to the schools, be involved in those schools, see what's going on, see what the parents are talking about. I don't know if you can talk to parents, but, um, you know, I do hair out of my house, so I hear a lot. And it's terrifying. And I'm just scared, um, when, I've just heard, you know, the safety of our students is scary. And I grew up, I remember being in class and a kid threw on a fit. I mean, everybody remembers that, but I just remember at a young age being like, "I am good. I deserve that self-manager badge." But guess who always gets theirs taken away, like that? Because I make one mistake. Why do we have rules? Why do we have the dress code if the only person that gets in trouble for it is fancy pants me? Because one time I wore something immodest. The one time. So why do we have all these rules if we're not, I mean, why do we have a hat rule and why do we have this rule and this rule? Half the teachers can't, they can't even live up to all these rules. Have rules, have certain rules, narrow it down, and stay to those rules and stick to them for all kids. And I know that discipline's hard. I mean, I have a four-year-old and a one-year-old and I'm struggling. I understand that your position and all your positions are hard. And to be a parent, these kids, these people talking out here, it's hard. And we're gonna stand up for our kids and we're gonna get heated about it. And I'm already heated about it and my kid's not even in the school. But also coming from a perspective where the internet's growing and homeschool is like awesome? North Mason School District's gotta kick it up. Because with a little bit of effort from me, I could homeschool my kids so easily. Now, that's a different topic, but I'm just saying, we've gotta compete. We gotta have programs, we gotta have discipline, because I think that discipline is the very core of it all. Because I'm looking at these art projects and thinking, you know, I'm, I'm doing like a homeschool thing with my kid right now and for everything I do art. But art has gone to the wayside with education because of the discipline. You can't really do art without the discipline. So, I mean, I don't even know what's going on in my head, but I just felt like I have to do my four-year-old kid due diligence and say, "Come on, let's be, let's discipline, let's be consistent and across the board and, you know, top-down, it'll go down and it'll funnel back up." And the parents, I'd like to know as a parent how I could help, but sometimes I understand that for teachers, that it would be harder for me to come in, for them to teach me everything that they need me to do. And so I feel like as, uh, for volunteers, for parents, there should be a system like, uh, we need this and this and this. We need staff in our, or we need help in our lunchroom, we need help on the playground, we need help and have these, and that could be a Facebook thing too. Um, we need this help. And then as the helpers come in, just sign them different things. Of course, I kinda wanna be in my kid's classroom, but I don't have to be. But I feel like there's so many good people in this community that would be willing to help. They don't help because they don't have any idea what to do. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Sorry. I was really cold. You can be so hot. Um, you mentioned, uh, Mr. Whiteman about procedures and not being able to address a situation beforehand. Um, I have followed every procedure and I've said this before, and I don't say this so that you treat me differently. I was a former employee of this district. Some of my former colleagues are sitting behind me. And I love this district. I stayed here when I had the opportunity to leave because I believe in the staff. I'm also a member of the Alternative Learning Department at OSPI, who we've quoted several times tonight. And I know that the state has changed its laws, but I also know that there's a lot of districts getting really creative about discipline, recognizing that there are students that should not be near general student populations and providing them with a free education and yet keeping staff members and students safe. I previously spoke to two student board members about my situation. I have filed an appeal to the gender discrimination finding. I have submitted the civil rights and equity procedure. Um, I've gone through all of the steps. And I sent an email, a lengthy one, um, that I was told was forwarded to all board members. So I don't know where the miscommunication is, where, um, it was said that my situation just came up. I was under the under, I was under the impression that there were at least two people here that knew about this particular situation. And I did talk about discipline and conduct. Yes, obviously, I have a personal interest in how a victim of certain things is treated, but on the flip side was the consistency of the discipline that was given to the perpetrator. And in my email, I set out all the district policies on, okay, for assault, here is the discipline. For sexual harassment, here is, and everything that my daughter experienced, here was the corresponding discipline. And because I'm a parent, I'm not privy to the information of the discipline that was given to that student. I feel as a school board, though, you perhaps have the power to look into that and see, is it being consistently applied and across the board? And does it, um, does the punishment fit the crime, so to speak? Still falling within state laws, which I know change quite a bit. So that is what I was asking, just to clarify. I have gone through the procedures. Um, and you asked about the community. I was a military mom, I'm now a single mom. And it's difficult to come to meetings at night, um, and when you have, okay, you have to fill out this form and then within 20 days you can get a hearing, then when you find this, you have 10 days to appeal this. And it's a lot. And I'm telling you, you may not be hearing the right squeaky wheels. There are some parents that just give up, like there are teachers that just give up because it takes so much work. It has taken me hours and I've taken time off work just to deal with this one situation. So, um, I'm glad that there are people speaking positively. Um, I love my former coworkers, I love the district, I love the community. But please don't think that because you're not hearing more noise that there isn't a lot of grumbling going on underground. Thank you so much for your time and for all that you do.
Thank you. I'll do a last call for public comment. Okay, so, any comments from the board and superintendent?
Nope.
I want to mention that I appreciate greatly the comments that have been shared with the board this evening. And I would urge, um, you continue. That is to say, I would like to hear from people, particularly concerning, anything concerning the policies of the school, uh, since I don't do daily operation, but any suggestions you have with respect to policy are things that I'm interested in. And I can't be everywhere at once or dealing with every issue at once. But I would certainly be glad to hear anything about policy concerns that people have. And if we could put in place some policies that would better serve the community, I am, that's part of my job, policymaking. And I would certainly like to hear from, uh, from people about those particular things. The last thing I would want of representative government is a government that doesn't hear. And when it comes to policy, that's what I listen to. Our superintendent does operations, we're in charge- Our superintendent does operations, we're in charge of policy and if there's suggestions as to how these things may be improved for the benefit of our kids, those are things I want to hear about and I'm sure it's true with my colleagues as well.
Yeah, kind of to speak to your point with regards to the social media and the, you know, the Facebook is, i- i- it is kind of the communication model, it's, it's rapid, it's immediate and stuff like that, but unfortunately it's still, i- i- it's Facebook, you know, you're not, it doesn't yet have its play as the official record of what's going on and I know a lot of people talking. I, I follow a lot of what's being said and, you know, I, I see things being written out and there's been some people I've actually tried to reach out to with very minimal luck and others that I've, you know, I'm hoping that, well, if that's a, a serious concern, I sure would hope that they would reach out to someone and talk to someone. And so it really is a two-way street, you know, we, we own one, one way and, and you folks as citizens and parents own, own the other way. And so this, tonight to me, this is great dialogue, I know not everyone's gonna walk out super happy, but this is good and I would really like to see this continue, so, thank you.
I want to mention one other thing I left out. You've seen our superintendent go around on this little scooter. I was there when she broke her ankle and I would, I take a certain satisfaction in reporting to you that it was on the Capitol steps somewhere. So I think that there's such a thing as battle pay or whatever it's called, that, that's just my comment, commendation for special work in legislative emergencies.
Bert?
Lost my train of thought, but I'll try to pick it up again. Let's see, thank you for everyone who brought something up. Let's see. I don't get very many comments directly from people in the community. Couple people once in a while give me a telephone call, there used to be one person that called me all the time and that person no longer does. I have difficulty with the emails. I do get people that buttonhole me in the supermarket and that sort of thing and, and that's fine. But mostly it's not very much. I certainly could get more. I don't go into the schools very often other than for Builders Club or whatever it is because I'm way busy with that full-time job on my own. But I work with kids and I, whatever it is, in any case, I would like to hear more from folks. And then regarding, I'm not quite sure I understood what you, you brought up. I was only trying to begin or to, to address, I didn't, wasn't anticipating that policy being brought up and stuff. Intrinsicly, as a board, we only get to talk to each other here at a board meeting. The state law does not permit us any other chance to do that. It requires us to do everything we discuss amongst, amongst ourselves in public. Whether the public shows up or not is a different thing. The law also says the public does not have a right to speak, but may speak if we let them. Meaning mostly that a dialogue is pretty much discouraged in that when a dialogue is trying to occur, like, which did happen tonight, sometimes it can get out of hand. Didn't get out of hand tonight, I don't feel like, it went, it went pretty okay. But the board gets put at a very big disadvantage in terms of looking not so good when a dialogue goes wrong because we don't have a chance to be able to discuss among ourselves the pros and cons of what somebody's mad about or somebody's bringing up about this thi- thing doesn't work. In any event, that's why I bring up, talk to us outside of the board meeting so that we can be armed with different points of view, other things to think about, things that we didn't think about among ourselves, because we will do that. Otherwise, again, I want to thank you for all bringing up your points and, and I wasn't trying to make a, make a thing like this was a terrible thing that you did or anything, hopefully I didn't. Nevertheless, that, that's just what I wanted to, we always have to educate people when they come here, if they bring up. I have been president of this board and I've had to shout down and shut someone up several times. And that is the right of the, of the president of the board to do that because the law specifically understands that school boards are different than every other kind of legislative body. And so it gives, give the school boards the chance to, to deliberate without having public comment. Nevertheless, the public should have input to the board. I'm sort of rambling at this point now, so I will stop and hope you all got that understanding. So please contact us separately outside of the board meeting so that we have information to discuss among ourselves. Thanks.
Do you have anything?
No, I'm good.
Okay. There's one other, oh, sorry, Spencer, do you have anything? Good, okay. So I'll go over the board self-assessment of the meeting, first one being general meeting behavior. Rating the board's behavior satisfactory, not satisfactory based off the different.
Criteria.
Criteria. I would say that we were satisfactory tonight. Governance principles review, also based off those, the theories of governa- governing or policy governance. I think we also were, the principles were followed tonight. And overall, I would rate us as satisfactory. With that said, our next board meeting date will be March 15th, 2018, at 6:30 PM here. We are going to adjourn for an executive session to last 30 minutes for the superintendent mid-year evaluation. Executive session will last for about 30 minutes discussing the superintendent's mid-year evaluation. No action will be taken as a result of this executive session, so.